Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is May 1st. This is an open study session as requested.
I'm sorry, it's June 1st.
I'm sorry, it is June 1st. Let's start over.
Eight, two, three.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight is June 1st, 2021. This is our open study session as requested per Councilman Zuhair Abdalhak. Go ahead, please, if anybody has any questions.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, this is the study session for the budget. Am I correct?
Correct.
I have a question for two people. One to uh uh Compliance Director Jamal and one to Ali uh to our Comptroller. And it's the same question. Do they see anything wrong with this budget?
Let's call the comptroller up first.
Hi, everybody. Uh, Patrick Controller. So um, first of all, happy Memorial Day to everybody and uh, you know, back to work. So uh, I mean, me personally, there's, there's a lot, you know, we, we, you've heard about the budget team. We've been discussing stuff pretty much every day. And the mayor, um, and Mariana and uh, everybody else. And we've been coming up with kind of a short-term plan and a long-term plan. So short-term, we think we put the budget in place enough that it's, uh, you know, it's sufficient and it's, uh, you know, covers pretty much whatever department needs, we feel, with the budget that we have. And you know, several members have been working hard to bring in more funds into the city. So we should be good as far as the budget looks for this year. And going forward, we've mentioned you a couple of the things that we're changing. Uh, you know, with procedures and with uh, basically how things look in the GLs and all that stuff. Uh, so we, we feel that we have a good budget that's balanced, that's sent to you guys that uh, you know, works. And we believe that by this time next year, we should have a system in place that should even be better, hopefully. So thank you very much for working with us on this kind of short-term thing where, you know, a lot of us are new in the different departments and stuff. So we crammed in last second and did a lot of work to try and get this done on time. But, you know, we're so appreciated. And if anybody has any questions, I'm here, so. That's my view.
That's one.
Jamal, you're next.
Good, uh, good evening, everybody. The budget as submitted is in compliance with the Charter of the State Treasury of Michigan. Please approve it with confidence. The budget is a moving document. It's liquid. It is, it, it can be amended. If there is anything that in the future, tomorrow, you think it should be amended, we will work with you to amend it. I encourage you, I recommend that this budget approved today as it's submitted. The mayor was very conservative, conservative about, you know, adding and actually posting, you know, income that with little bit of question, I disagreed with him, but I agreed with him. You know, he will be conservative, I will be conservative too. Uh, with that, I open for questions. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, hold on, we have. Councilman Coniston, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and uh, Mayor and Administrative Branch. Uh, thank you for all the work you did, uh, getting this budget out as uh, quickly and as timely as you did. I have three concerns. Number one is these, our property values are up. And the letter we got from the State Treasurer, did it April 20th, pointed out that this budget uh, uses up 16% of fund balance. So if we had another five uh, budgets like this, we would have no uh, reserves, no fund balance. Um, I've been around the city a long time and we have not had, I think, only one or two years where we've had to use money from our fund balance, and those were during recessions. So, uh, and the letter asked for a uh, I'll call it a deficit reduction program. So that's one concern, using that much out of fund balance. And number two, in the past, the council has voted for an administrative fee and an amount less than 1%. Uh, we know that the administrative fee can only be put on by the city council and it's for the city collecting property taxes, sending them on to the state, to the county. But this year, we're having to adopt the, the full 1% administrative fee. And then the, the third issue is the uh, concern that there are several new positions and that the uh, city bank accounts aren't being reconciled timely, the, the day-to-day operations as far as uh, the city books uh, being balanced, uh, not being done timely. I can remember years ago where the interim building director, Ken LaMontaigne, was having checks issued uh, on behalf of the building department for companies that didn't exist. They were being ca- uh, deposited in accounts in the names of the fictitious companies. And then Mr. LaMontaigne was taking the money. He got caught. John Riley actually discovered it. And uh, he was prosecuted uh, uh, and, and sent to jail. So those are my three concerns. The, the, you know, using in good times too much of our uh, city reserves, the, having to put on the 1% administrative fee and the accounts uh, our, our, our books not being uh, balanced uh, on a, on a current basis.
Okay, at this time, I have uh, Mr. Jamal first and then Treasurer Hicks Clayton second to answer this. Go ahead, please.
Uh, I am, I am unmuted?
Yeah, it's your turn.
Uh, and respond to the concern for uh, the Honorable Councilman Robert Constant. First one, the uh, the budget balance, actually the, the budget itself. You know, it is a combination of reserve and what we expected. So if by posting, you know, transfer in the budget from the general fund balance to the expected, you know, revenue, that doesn't mean we're not gonna use it. That means if we need to use it, it's there. It's a matter of budgeting process, uh, Honorable Constant. It's not a matter of cash flow. The budget, as I said, we may end up actually not using a penny. Because I'm expecting about 2.5 million dollars, you know, reimbursement, another uh, 400 or 350,000 from CDBG. We expected, you know, uh, to revenue for taxation, it to be 10,750,000. We listed only 10,500,000. Uh, our, our value, the property value, I was talking to uh, to our uh, Honorable Chair, the value is went up from 1.3 billion. Uh, I don't think we discussed that, but to 1.4 billion. So, uh, you know, when you look at the budget as presented, that doesn't mean it's a solid number. I can right now revise the budget and make it looks like 400, 500,000 dollars surplus.
But the. In other words, that's worst-case scenario.
Yes.
Uh.
There's no worst case. Honorable Constant, there is no worst-case scenario. I assure you, there's money coming in the millions with this ARP. We can realize it soon. We are working with Waitrim to calculate our loss, loss revenue. We have a lot of loss revenue. From December 2020, the government already telling us, we are gonna calculate the lost revenue and they cannot pay it for us. I mean, we already, we already inked 24 million, let me read it for you, 24 million 314,000 and 463,000 dollars coming to the city. It is the city job to secure that. And we will secure it. We will secure it. I assure you, Mr. Constant, and you know me for a long time. I don't talk without verification, validation, and certification. We will. We will be all right if everything goes all right. The budget is just a statement for today. You approve it, tomorrow it could be changed. Second, second question. You are, um, you talked about uh, the, uh, what we call, you know, the trial balance. The city never had a trial balance. We started implementing the trial balance. Actually, a policy, you know, we've been pushed to do it by, by mail, by the chair. We need the Treasury every month to give us a trial balance, you know, telling us how much she have in the funds. And that system doesn't exist right now. We are working with Waitrim. There is a proposal from Waitrim coming to you on June 8th, explaining, you know, how we can link those departments. Now, that report required by the charter never been produced since, since ever. You only receive the investment, but you never receive the trial balance. We are working on the trial balance right now. You will have a trial balance by end of June. Number three, your question was about, uh, your concern about.
Fee.
Uh, the, the 1% fee. We, we been charging 1% fee. It is a restricted fund, regulated by the State of Michigan Treasury Department. It can't be spent except on collecting taxes and, and spending taxes, like, you know, calculating. So not every penny, the Treasury Department is qualified for that. But all the, all the assessor qualified for. And also the Board of Review, the cost, the cost of the lawyer, it can be paid from that. We already creating a new segregated, independent fund for the 1%. It's gonna be a special in the bank, account in the bank. So if the Chair says, Madame Treasurer, I wanna know how much there, she can tell her in, in a minute, push the button. It just, you know, we just started. I mean, remember, I been on that, on that particular job assigned since March 8th. A lot of progress happened, not because of me, because of really, you know, the directives that I had from few of few before and now when I am in. So if there is any more concern, Honorable Constant, prevent you from approving this budget.
Well, Director Jamal, so if we have multiple bank accounts, instead of the money being uh, you know, it's, 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 it's tax collections, government money, don't we incur fees uh, with all these different bank accounts? We, we incur uh, banks' charts fees and they make money uh, these different accounts. Go ahead.
Honorable Constant, I agree with you. If we are operating a for-profit enterprise, we are a municipal corporation under the State of Michigan, okay, directive regulator, regulate, regulations of the Treasury Department. We don't operate based on profit or loss. We operate based on the law. What's required by law. Those are independent funds. They should be tracked, validated, reported to legislative as independent funds. This is the way it's supposed to be, and I assure you, you will be happy about it.
Thank you, Hassan.
Do you have any other concern not to approve the budget?
That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Treasurer Hicks Clayton, would you like to respond?
I would. Thank you, Madam Chair. And good evening, honorable body. And thank you, Director Jamal, for answering those questions. I had the same notes. But I wanted to first take the 1% admin fee, which is allowed under the Public Act, as you're aware. And um, the thing, when I was elected as a council member back in 2012, was when I took office, this fee, to the best of my knowledge, has always been adopted and approved by the council body. Um, I am happy to provide a historical activity report. If any of the council members would like to see what that looks like, how much revenue was generated by the 1% on an annual basis. Um, to answer your question also, it is restricted funds. As Director Jamal had said, we just talked about this the last council meeting. The honorable body approved that, establishing and separating those accounts, which is very important since it is restricted and also helps um, with tracking and accountability. But um, to answer your question about bank fees, again, this is not a nonprofit organization, but the bank fees, we're getting a 50% rate um, discount, which it puts it at $7.50 monthly. So that I wanted to share with you. And the other thing I wanted to share was the bank reconciliation that you mentioned in the letter that is mentioned. All due respect is based off and response to last year's audit for the previous fiscal year. Okay, so, and I will tell you, and I'm gonna share with you, and I've shared it by email with every council member, but for public record, I want to state it now. Um, that when I came into this office after being elected in November and I took the position November 18th, um, I'm talking to staff and realizing and looking for bank reconciliations and looking at the audit report and noticing what things were flagged. Uh, we, the, the actual bank reconciliations hadn't been done since July of that year. Okay, so again, I came in November. They weren't done. So August was still pending. So we came up with an action plan internally to address and resolve this issue, an action plan that was dated, stamped with a plan. And I will tell you that those bank reconciliations, the bank reconciliations are current right now in our office. Um, so the staff member that does that, we've made sure she has plenty of time. We've shifted her workload. We've cross-trained employees that are eligible to do workload to relieve that person of some time, so that way she could focus on those reconciliations. So I did want to share that with your honorable body. I know I shared it by email, but I'd like to go on public record for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Yeah, not to belabor the point, but two things, I, I can tell you, the last six, seven years, we've never, we've never adopted the full 1% of the administrative fee. That's number one. Number two, the last correspondence I saw from the Treasurer's office says the bank statements, uh, the bank statements were reconciled as of March. And number three, um, uh, when uh, the former comptroller left, the bank statements were reconciled till January of 2021. But I, I'll leave my comments at that. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to respond to that. That's not true. Whoever said 20, January 2021, because I'm in this office and I know what's been reconciled. Um, I will also tell you that when you get your bank statements, as I'm sure you're aware, they're currently, you know, what we get in the mail is April. Now, we've gone to an online platform, which is relatively new for the city. We recently did that, so we can reconcile quicker. That's part of that action plan that we did internally. So again, um, I'm, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure you have the complete information today. Thank you.
Also have Director Jamal wants to respond?
Uh, yes, uh, in terms of the 1%, I recommended uh, Honorable Constant, I recommended the 1% for this year. I didn't look at, uh, you know, my concern wasn't last year or the year before. My concern is how much really we need to allocate from those funds. We collect taxes for, we collect a lot of taxes for active 45. We collect a lot of taxes for other schools. And, you know, the, we, we need to understand also that if we have left over a little bit, no problem. It will be state and their own independent respected account. Uh, that, that's my response. I, I agree with the, with the treasurer in terms of reconciliation. I don't know where you get that information, but uh, I assure you, I checked that out. There were nothing, nothing. Trial balance. Please, you know, I did check that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Council, next we have Councilman Abilhak. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do have several questions, actually. Uh, first in response to Councilman Constant. Linda Vence left on the 12th or the 13th of November, so she couldn't reconcile anything for January. The most she could have reconciled is up to November.
I said when Chuck Bonds left in uh, January of 2021. Go ahead.
I'm not criticizing, I'm just correcting the information, but uh, one thing I would like the mayor to tell us about the 3 million dollars, which was deferred by the previous administration and the needs to be paid by orders of the Treasury Department. If the mayor is on, I would like to hear that because I am planning on asking to remove the 2 million dollars, which has, is assigned for OPEB, to be put in the general fund to cover that obligation. So if the mayor would be kind, please to respond to this, so he can inform us.
Thank you, Councilman Zuhair Abdalhak. Uh, you, you are, you are correct. And uh, as, as you all know, uh, the bu- my, the budget team that we put in place, uh, that they've been working ve- very hard, uh, finding out, you know, things that uh, in the past, um, well, there, there was a lot, there was a lot of gaps, put it this way. And, you know, since, since the budget team, each, each person was actually tasked with different, uh, different items, looking at different things. And uh, when we discovered just probably within the last probably few weeks, that 3 million dollars uh, knocking on our doors that we have to pay this money now that it, it has been deferred. Uh, you, you, you are correct, you know, we, we have to pay that. So that's something that we, we did not anticipate. And especially with this year, as you know, several people bought, you know, uh, approved the budget from last year, even though we uh, it was uh, it, it was approved based on whatever assumptions that people had at the time, even though I brought it up back in the, you know, over a year ago, that this budget, it's, it was too, it was not even, obviously not conservative. That's what we did this year. We made it very conservative because we still don't know. And uh, from the year before, uh, I've, you know, I mean, you can go back to the minutes and see, I actually did not approve last year's budget because the revenues, it was, uh, there was a lot of revenues that we knew that we were not gonna meet. And we're feeling it right now. And that's why we had to do a lot of adjustments to the budget, just to make sure that we're conservative and uh, make sure that uh, you know, if we get the money, you know, if we, we make more money from revenues, then that's great, great news. And actually, I think we are gonna make the money. We're gonna exceed, you know, the team is working very hard uh, right now to uh, to make up the last revenues that we had in the past. But as uh, Director Jamal mentioned, we are getting that 24 million dollars. I mean, that's, that's, that's guaranteed, you know, by the government. And that's just, you know, we should be getting that anytime. And part of, part of the revenue, uh, I mean, the money that we're getting, that we can actually retrieve some of the lost revenue. I mean, a good thing for us that this, uh, the American Rescue Plan with the 24 million dollars, that we can, I mean, obviously, there's certain things you can use it on. There's some stuff you can't use it on, but we can use it on uh, getting revenues that we lost. So with that, you know, I going back to your uh, comment, the 3 million dollars, that was actually uh, it just came into our lap. It's, they said that you need to pay it and we have to pay it ASAP. And we would appreciate if we can get the other, the 2 million that you mentioned, if we can use it to pay off that, that.
Mayor, how much time we have uh, to pay the 3 million dollars? And is there any penalty if we are late?
Okay, I think Director Jamal was actually looking at that. I don't know, he, he might be a better uh, answer that question.
Okay.
Go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Uh, Honorable body, the 3 million dollars, the mayor mentioned, it's a combination of several shortage. Uh, so far, you know, I was working with the deputy uh, the comptroller and she identified deferred, uh, you know, what we call deferred French benefit. And so far, I couldn't put my hand correctly on the amount. So uh, and, 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 and addition to that, we have to cover for other laws or for what myself, uh, the Chief of Staff and uh, the Director Subota, we are working together with a recommendation by Plantman lately to, to actually get the maximum. Uh, I think, you know, Elizabeth, the Director Perry will, will explain that more. I, I think and I believe that we are short in actually allocating in our fund, between funds. We have a lot of funds, uh, are not really allocated the way it's supposed to. And I, I am, I am sorry to say.
Director Jamal?
Yes.
Uh, you need this money this year on the budget and the general.
We need the 2 million dollars. It's on the, it's on the agenda. Uh, the mayor and the treasurer, um, Lisa Hicks Clayton put it on the agenda for you to approve. Uh, thank you for working with me, uh, Honorable Abdalhak. Thank you also for uh, Councilman Bedun. Uh, all the council, thank you for the Chair. She was very, very, uh, very, very spiritual cooperative today. You know, she asked, uh, you know, what she needs from the, from the budget and I was, I was culturally, you know, uh, you know, provided. And I am open for any other question. Yes, we need it. Thank you for your support. It's on the agenda for next week.
Thank you, Director. My second question, and I'm not trying, please to uh, show any disrespect to my colleagues or anybody. I don't know how many people on the city council or in the mayor's office have read the Act 345 and the contract with the police and fire, especially the drop program. I read it several times. And I have lots of concerns because last time during the study session, nobody wanted to answer my questions in a clear way, which will put all these concerns to rest. We have around 11,930,072 dollars for Act 35. I know it's, it's including 345. It's including several things. But I go again to the drop program. We are under obligation as a city by contract and I respect the contract. And I'm not trying to violate the contract. I want everybody to understand it. Where the 5% is paid from? Anybody can answer me?
Who would like to answer that for Councilman Abdalhak?
I, I will.
Go ahead, Mr. Director Jamal.
Uh, from the compliance point of view, for budgetary, we do have no problem. From the legislative point of view, that's up to the city council legislator to decide. It's in your hand. From the, we, I made sure, me and the budget team, that we funded the Act 345 with, actually, we added this year with, with the, with the very, uh, you know, supportive, uh, Ms. Subota, we, we added 4, 441,000 dollars as a contingency for our health and hospitalization because of, you know, what we may need. Uh, the Act 45 will be next year, actually next week, independent. Uh, the board can know at any time from our.
Director Jamal, Director Jamal, I still want to know, and I want my colleague to understand, and the residents who are flooding in their homes and need money dearly to fix the flood problem. Okay? I'm looking at this, that we are guaranteeing the retiree. They have around 38 million dollars in their fund, approximately roughly as by 630, 2020, last year. That's the information I have. I don't have this year yet.
Yes.
We guarantee them by contract 5%. We guarantee him by contract five percent. Let's assume they lost the twenty four million dollars in February, March and April last year from their pension. Okay, but they recovered. Thank God, they done far far better than than they expected. But the five percent. Let's suppose their drop program does not make. Any money, they lose money. We guarantee him the five percent. I understand that by contract and I have no problem if they don't make money on their investment. My problem is if they make, let's say, ten percent on their investment. We still do, we still pay him the five percent. On their fund of thirty eight million. And do we give him the money which the investment made in full? And where is it showing anywhere in the records? Because I spoke to Francois from G R S. He said they put the five percent every the every year they allocated with the Act three forty five. And the other money which they make on investment, what happened to it? How they distributed to the participants? And where are the records to show how this is distributed? Okay, those are questions need to be answered because I'm going to tell you. If we stop the five percent. For the next fifteen years, you can take a bond of fifty million dollars in the city to fix the flood in the South End. That's how I think that we have a huge problem. And I'm not trying to take anybody's benefit. But this program, as Mr. Riley himself stated in Open City Council. That it is going to be huge disaster for the city in the long run. I want you, my colleagues, to think about it and before you approve this eleven million nine hundred. To ask G R S, to ask the treasurer, to ask anybody, please to itemize what's included in this eleven nine.
Okay, Director Jamal, go ahead, please.
Okay. To answer you, Mr. I mean, Honorable Abdul Haq, first of all, this issue is not a budgetary issue. This is can be discussed in a special session. This is a this is an active forty five. The subject. We in the budget, we manage, we administer the independent fund, which we call Actu forty five. It is regulated by the state. Only part we do is making sure it goes into the general ledger revenue. It goes out from the general ledger as expenditure.
Director Jamal.
Can I finish, please, Mr. Abdul Haq?
Please, go ahead.
So it goes out from the compliance point of view of the budgetary process, we are in full compliance now. Now. There's there's a ten different accounts we record in the general ledger. It's in your budget right now. You can see every expenditure where it goes and belong to what. We based our calculation on the. Actu forty five board certified, certified, you know, actuary report. We add to that the five hundred or six hundred administrative fee. That goes directly to them. We calculate, the city calculate the healthcare, the hospitalization for the retirees. We figure out this year, it's going to be around four point nine million dollars. We worked very, very diligently with the our 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 very experienced, you know. Director Sobota Barry and we come up with very realistic, realistic. Statistically, you know, she is a mathematician. She has a master in mathematics. We did the we did the math. We did the statistical analysis and we did the moving average. We did wherever we can. We find out that we need around four point nine million dollars. Okay, we put them there. We put four hundred forty and we put contingency four hundred forty one more. We need about sixty thousand dollars for because of the administration of that fund. Great, that's what Mr. Riley gave us. We needed, you know, money for the prior and for the first year we got from the chiefs. That's where the estimation, it may be less, maybe more. We have money. So everything you asked for, it is in the budget. Now, if you like to discuss the amount of the calculated actuary report. Including or not include the five percent, we will discuss that later on. It's above my grade. I did not do compliance for Actu forty five and I am not qualified to do.
Director Jamal, before before you continue, please.
So so I assure you.
Director Jamal, please listen to me like I listen to you.
Go ahead.
You have spoke for several minutes. You did not give me an answer. Nobody gave me an answer.
Which answer you want from me?
Listen, please, I have somebody put the meeting of the Pension Board. On our mail, city mail. I don't know if you guys noticed them or read them. And it has calculation for several people with the five percent was their money they want to exit. It is every three months they calculate it and we know how much at the end of the year they get. And how much individually each one gets when they leave. Okay, I just want to know, simple question. Are we giving this money on July first when we give the Act three forty five? Do we give him in advance five percent? Or we calculate it at the end of the year on six thirty twenty two and give him what what they earned? For the prior year. How it is calculated? This bagel in my head, I nobody is giving me straight answer. Nobody is able to give me a piece of paper telling me, you know, this is how much money, you know, we pay. And that's where it is coming from. Is it coming from general fund? Is it coming from some other place? I have no problem approving the budget, but can I I can assure you, I'm going to put resolution on the next. Or the the meeting after the next, you know, to come up with some answers for this issue. And since, you know, I spoke little too much. I really encourage my colleagues to read page fifty nine to to sixty nine of the contract. That's the portion of the drop program. It's not that that hard. Maybe you and I learn so much and maybe if I am wrong, I am sorry. But I have no problem with your budget. Thank you, Madam Chair, very much.
Well, next I have Comptroller. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I, Councilman Abdelhaq, I mean, I just wanted to point out the one one thing. I mean, this is not something that we created, at least, I mean, I know I'm new, but from my understanding, this was a negotiation between the city. And the the personnel that that collect on on those that portion of the pension. It's a contract that basically was put put together and we're basically paying what we're contractor contractually obligated to pay. I mean, we might like Director Jamal said, I mean, you might want to set up some sort of a meeting where we have. Members of the board of the, you know, three forty five sit with us. And we can work on, you know, we got, I mean, my understanding is you have negotiations coming up. With the different departments and the different benefits and things like that that you guys are going to be doing. So I mean, that's something you guys need to take a look at as well. I mean, at our end. You know, from the budgetary point of view, we're obligated to say, this is what the actuary report said that we need to pay them. And this is what we should budget for.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Abdelhaq.
Don't mind. I have no problem with the contract and I repeat, I respect and honor the contract even if it if it has faults in it. But it is our duty, our obligation as city council. If we feel that we don't have the right answer, we don't have satisfactory answers. To direct and put resolution, ask in the administration. To basically when the contract comes for renegotiation. If we have to take out those things, I will vote for him. If they are okay and they don't harm the budget, I have no problem to vote for it. When the mayor bring the contract in front of us, if I am on the council. But I would like to put you guys at notice that we should put the resolution, ask in the administration. To basically negotiate those contracts in the most intelligent and possible way. To save money for the resident without harming the people who work all their life to get their pension. Thank you.
Director Jamal, did you have something further to say?
Yeah, just, just a quick response. Honorable Abdul Haq, I I do feel what you feel. But we have no authority over the Actu forty five as administrators of the city. We only process the, you know, I encourage you, I encourage all of you to know a little bit more, contact the chiefs. They are board members, contact the the treasurer of the city. The treasurer is the treasurer of the board. Thank you for supporting the budget. I do agree with you.
Director Jamal, I like I like to correct you. We have every power over Act three forty five as council. We approve that money. The state, the state ask for sixty percent funding. That's the state law. They have over eighty one percent. I can ask in a put resolution if I want to, not to give him a penny this year, but I'm not going to do that. I just need the transparency. I need to know exactly what the taxpayers are paying and what is it for. And if there is something not kosher, I would like to correct it as soon as possible.
You are welcome. You you the legislative body of the city, you can introduce, you work with the chair, you work collectively. You can do whatever you 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 like to do legislatively, will follow your directive. Resolutions, ordinance, we are a, we are public servants, we are operators, we are not legislators.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Councilman Abdallah. Go ahead, please.
A couple of questions. The first question, I'm not sure who could answer this, but in regards to the one percent taxation. I recall that it being lower, but even in addition to that, additionally, I'm just wondering if we should have it lower. Based on people's economic situation right now with the pandemic and all. I mean, the more and more I think about it, do we really need to charge people one percent? I mean, if you think about it, we already get taxes from different residents. So we have obviously fifty something million that comes in. And I know it's budgeted for different things, but we have enough money to be able to set for administration. So to charge people this, I want to know if it's A mandated that we have to charge. And B, if it is mandated, doesn't have to be that much. It seems like that's too high of a number to me.
That would probably be a question for the treasurer.
Well, the reason I ask is because there's different things that we already do, we where we collect permits, like right now, like for example, based on that theory. We come up with a one percent to administer the permits. I mean, that doesn't make sense to me because we already charged for permits. We could charge one percent for the tickets. We've charged one percent for courts. We already charge people for that. Why should we have these types of what I would like to consider, excuse the French, a garbage fee? Unless it's something that's mandated and if it is mandated, what is the minimum that we could charge? Thank you.
Hey, Treasurer Hicks Clayton, would you like to answer that?
I will answer it in part and I will defer it to the Budget Compliance Director. But that one percent is provided for in a Michigan combined law, it's up to. So it's not like it has to be one percent. I wanted to run a report and review the previous years. I know the I was asked to do the one percent and created the document that you see on your agenda tonight. That was based off of the document from last year. I did not change anything other than the date, so it was a one percent last year. That one percent again is restricted. The question becomes though, that one percent covers your, a lot of your expenses. In your treasurer's office for collection and processing of the taxes when they're paid. As well as the assessor's office and board of review and attorneys. So the question becomes is those expenses are still going to be there. They're not going to change. So do you feel you're comfortable saying, well, let's not do the full one percent? This is really a a council decision, by the way, but if we don't do the one percent, what do you do? And where are you going to recover the money from to make those budgets whole? For those operating expenses, because those operating expenses are not going to change. So I would like to go ahead and defer the rest to Director Jamal, if I may.
Before you do, I'd I'd like to ask you another question then, Treasurer. Because last year, we brought in, as far as taxes are concerned, over ten and a half million dollars. Okay, and I realize that ten and a half billion dollars are a part of our revenues. I realize that and I know it's used for a lot of things, oh, just obviously the treasurer's needless to say. But with that being the case, why do we need, and I'm not blaming you, I'm just asking the question. Why do we need to charge additional amount? When the state says that you could do up to one percent, then that could be as little as zero. So I'd like to propose for our fellow council members. I'm okay with even be it being zero because I think we have enough revenue that comes in to be able to pay for for the different fees that this thing goes to. But the second question I want to ask you is, what do you have in residuals left over from last year?
Thank you.
Right, so I would have to run that report and I I can't do that right now, but. I can tell you that last year, the collected, when I looked at it, because I had reviewed this previously, was a little under eight hundred thousand dollars was collected. So I would have to take a look at that and see, but here's the other problem. Here's the problem. Now, keep in mind, that percent that admin fee didn't go into a separate account. It was never been accounted for separately. So when you say to me, hey, how much money do you have left? I wish I could answer you that because I can't tell you that right now. We can tell you that moving forward though, because we set, we're separating those accounts, right, those restricted accounts. So really, I can't tell you what's left over because it's all was put in general fund. And we don't know and we can't account for expenditures from which department. Because again, it's not just the treasurer's department. There's other departments that are part of that pie, if you will. So unfortunately, I can't.
And I respect and I respect that, but then for us to go, and again, I'm saying us, I'm not pointing anybody out. I'm saying us as a body, as a total body, to just totally charge one percent. We don't know how much was left because we didn't have a restricted account, so we don't know how much was left or used for that, maybe even possibly. You yourself are saying you have all the numbers right now, but in addition to that, we've got ten and a half million dollars that comes in already. We don't need to charge people additional fees because to me, those are basically garbage fees. You call, we could all call them, whatever we want to call them. They're garbage fees. I'd rather have it where we're charging people a little bit more taxes. At least they'll know that that's how much taxes they're they're paying, but to have it be. And again, I want to make it clear, I'm using the word snuck in. I'm not me, I'm not naming somebody specifically. I'm talking about in general. Based on a one percent taxation fee, I'd like to propose, if my colleagues are okay with it, that we do it at a quarter percent this year. See how that works out for us and then whatever's left over, we'll go ahead and send it to the year after that. If there's nothing left over, we'll we'll be able to figure out that's enough or not, but to just charge one percent, I think is way too much. That's the first question. I'll wait for the answer on the second thing that you were.
So, yeah, and if I may add, I I respect that you're right. Ultimately, it is a council body's decision to what to charge, you know, what you decide. I just ask, and this is why I wanted to defer to the com- the budget and compliance director, because what is going to be that impact? You know, I know you said, well, we've got ten million coming in, but remember that's already accounted for with other operational costs. And so I think he would be better suited to answer that question. Where again, because we didn't track it and we couldn't track it because it's never been separated till now, moving forward. Move, you're absolutely right. Moving forward in the new fiscal year, we'll be able to track, we'll be able to see how much money came in, how much was spent. And actually have the dollar amount, the figures. So you're right, moving forward, that will be a great benefit for.
And I was, and I respect your answer. I know it's not your fault because I know you're newer on there. And I know that, you know, we had another treasurer, our current council member, Sir Abdul Haq, for a short time period. And I know it's always been done that way, but to me, I'm just looking, I would like to look at things in just plain, basic, third grader perspective. If I'm a resident and you say to me, not you, as a body, as a city. Well, we're going to charge you this one percent because we're just not sure how much we sometimes use. We may use this, we may not use this. A lot of times it was basically intermingled with our general fund, so therefore we have no idea how much we really spent. And really have no idea how much was left over because I'll I'll put one big bucket of money. So you know what we're going to do? We're going to charge you just in case we ever needed it, we'll charge you one percent. I think that's wrong. I I I think it's truly, truly wrong for us as a city to charge people that. And I would highly recommend that my colleagues not charge people that moving forward, but I'll wait for the answer from. But I'll wait for the answer from, from our director.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
Honorable, honorable Mr. Honorable Counsel Abdullah. Your question is in multiple, uh, uh, levels of questions. Let me make sure, you know, uh, the council understand, you know, what's this one percent is about. This one percent never been brought before. Most of you, you've been in the council for almost three years. That was not being brought before, even though it should be clear. I have a discussion, I had a discussion with the previous treasurer, CPA. You know, uh, uh, actually Administrator Jean Raye. He told me specifically that it's wash, wash. He did calculate that in the past. Most of you that were on the council and, you know, he indicated to me it's a wash, wash. Now, when I read, when I did calculate, it is approximately ninety percent correct. Last year it was charged one percent. Nobody raised any issue. So this year, we brought this to the surface to make sure segregating the fund. Not as much as I am concerned about the, the illegal use of the fund. I am more concerned about transparency. That's why I brought this to the attention of the mayor. We all worked together, the, the mayor and previously, you know, the, the chair knew about that. And there was a plan and the audit, the, the forensic audit was part of all this. Now, we are really doing audit in ourselves. We are forensically doing audit. We're correcting what we're supposed to be corrected. The ones who brought the audit to, to life, they are now, one of them is the mayor. So I have no problem with one percent and I encourage you to approve the one percent because we need it. The budget is under stress. We can't afford to pay from the general government operating fund. For the treasury and the collective, the collection of tax, including the assessor. Again, I stress out, I stress out that you please approve the one percent. Because it is kind of like wash, wash. But again, let me make sure you understand, please. Why the one percent is actually approved by the state legislator. It is to make sure.
No, but it's up to.
Treasury Department of the municipalities of the state of Michigan are not under no stress. No budgetary stress to function, to safeguard the, the, the taxpayers' money. So if we are under stress budgetarily, then the one percent is provided by, 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 by law. The constitution of United States of America allows the state of Michigan. To allow the municipalities to go in and charge the one percent, up to one percent. To, to actually free, free the treasury department of municipalities again. From any pressure, any budgetary pressure to function and safeguard the taxpayers' money. So please understand this and I disagree, I disagree with stress. That we need the one percent to make sure our budget is in compliance for this year. Thank you.
So two things I want to say on that. Number one, you yourself said, which I know you know and all of us know, any budget is a moving target. And you're absolutely right on that. That's number one. Number two, on anything that's ever been done in the past. And again, I want to make it clear, I'm not blaming nobody here. This is not a blame game. I'm not into that stuff. And yes, it's been approved in the past, absolutely. But you know what? Just like you said, just like I say, just like I would say, it's a moving target. And I'm just saying, last year, I think it was, if I'm not mistaken, I thought it was fifty percent, like, like half a percent.
No, it was one percent. It, we were collecting seven hundred forty thousand. We proposed this year seven fifty. It was one percent.
Madam Chair, wasn't it one percent last year? Okay. So to me, again, all I'm saying is, is I am proposing that we start at either a quarter percent. Or maybe in the worst case, half a percent. Now, if we did it last year, that's fine. All I'm saying is, it should not be like that, especially because we don't have a restricted fund. We have no idea totally how much is actually used for that. That's, that's my opinion.
We know. We have five hundred thousand to treasury. We have two hundred eighty thousand. They, they, uh, they, uh, they, you know, please read your budget.
Okay, well.
Go ahead and read the balances.
Okay, well, this is, this is, this goes right into my second question I had, Madam Chair. So we have, if you look at this, would be on page fifty.
Yes, Maria.
Of the current proposed budget. Okay? You guys see it? So on there, if, if you look at it, in two thousand twenty, twenty-one activity through June the thirtieth. As a lot of us know, this was actually through April at the time. But we had an ending fund balance of twenty-three million. In previous years, it had consistently been right around the thirteen million dollar mark. Then when you go to next, uh, to activities, I mentioned, we are at twenty-three million, twenty-three million nine hundred six thousand zero zero nine. Then this was forwarded over and now the recommended and requested budget is for twenty-four million in the ending balance. I have a question for either the mayor or our director to answer or whoever prefers to answer that. Why is that so high when we've consistently been at thirteen million? I have a concern that we have a lot of loose or available funds that are possibly being collected. That maybe do not need to be collected. In other words, if we are having too much money left over, again, to simplify it. If we are taking in ten dollars and we only need seven dollars, do we really need to keep three dollars on hand? As just, just in case something ever happened. I realize we've got to keep some money on hand, absolutely. But do we really need that high of a figure of twenty-four million dollars? So I'm not sure who can answer that, but please answer it.
Mayor, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, yeah, and, and I.
I'm sorry, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, he, he directed it towards the mayor or who else?
I think Martin wanted to chime in with that one, so.
Right, but he's addressing it to you at this point. That's why.
I think Martin, that's what I mean is Martin has been wanting to answer that question on the one percent, so.
Okay. Martin, would you like to go ahead?
Yeah, I just wanted to make, I had a comment. The one percent is administrative cost. Uh, is supposed to reimburse the taxing party. So the, the, the city in this case. When you're sending the tax bills out, it, it's reimbursing the costs for doing all that. So it's not just the city taxes that you're imposing the one percent on, you're imposing it on all taxes collected by the city. It's including county, that's including other taxing authorities that you're ultimately passing the money to. And it's supposed to reimburse the city for costs incurred. You don't have to track it as a separate fund balance restricted or anything like that because you're already incurring those expenses. And the state legislature, legislature allows you to impose up to one percent. So you're not technically imposing it only one percent on your taxes for the general fund or police and fire or anything like that. You're doing it based on all the taxes collected. So I just want to make sure that, that was pretty clear and I'm not sure if that was or not.
Is that your question, Councilman?
Well, the answer is, the answer is a question. I was aware of that particular thing in regards to the one percent. But I'd like to have the answer in regards to the, uh, how much there's, there is in the fund balance. And this was not directed to the mayor specifically, it's to whoever feels they're the right person to answer it.
All right, I was just trying to be respectful. Um, who can answer that? Director Jamal, go ahead, please.
Uh, also, I defer this to our great auditors. Uh, they can explain to the council how the trial balance at June thirty works. You know, preparing for the, uh, what we call, you know, the general, uh, the corporate, the corporate fund. Uh, and, and that will probably most likely, eh, in a, in a CPA way. You know, also our honorable, uh, Dave. Uh, it's, it, you know, you can't look at where we are right now and what we're supposed to be. There will be somewhat adjustment, you know, before. Those adjustments, we call them amendment, the balanced budget, you know, and to, and to actually come up with a trial balance. Okay, reconciliation with the fund balance and the bank account. And that's part of, you know, what we are going to be presenting to you next week. You know, that plan where we do trip, we call it trip audit. Trip audit is a, is a kind of management. They don't tell us what to do. They tell us what we're supposed to have. And based on that, we make our, you know, decision as a management for the city and administrators for the city. You know, that particular one right now, it's not an indicators of what we have and what we don't have. You know, in the city budget. Please, Martin, if you can, I appreciate your input.
So talking about minimum fund balance, so I don't have the budget in front of me right now. What fund are we referring to?
We are referring to the, we are referring, Martin, to why we are low on our revenue now. You know, looking at the previous or the current year. If, you know, uh, the honorable Dave, the honorable Dave Abdullah have a good question. Why we are right now not reaching like the eighty percent of what we're supposed to be at. Uh, I, I can give you an example right now. CDBG. We didn't have a drawdown for eight months. So we do owe about three hundred fifty thousand or whatever. I, I didn't review it. But that money, uh, Councilman Abdullah, it's shown as we paid it, but we don't recover it. We also paid two point five million dollars to, to Lieutenant Lisa Martin. She can assess that. We paid it from the general fund and we didn't recover it. It's going to be recovered by the end of June or maybe by end of July. So if, if I give you just this to account, it's three million dollars that we know that's going to come. But we don't realize it. See, the difference between, you know, the cash management and the GL posting is we can't post. If we don't have the money in our hands. Gen, general ledger, you don't count your beans until you have your beans in your hand. The invoice come in, it goes to the, to the controller, you know, account payable or account receivable division. It comes through, uh, the, the treasurer. We have it, we post it, it goes into the general ledger. Now you're looking at general ledger, you know, we anticipated money, but it's not posted yet. It's illegal to post what we don't have. So, I mean, uh, it's, it's the way the budget works. So I assure you, our budget is legit, it's in compliance, please approve it. Go ahead. Do you have anything else to, to add?
Well, I'll be honest, I have my question answered.
Madam Chair.
Okay, at this point, we are running way over from what our study session has. And I have several council members that still need to talk. Is it possible we can move forward with the other council members at this time? And then come back if you've got more questions that weren't answered?
Well, Madam Chair, I try, it's simple, it's, it's, it's not a complicated question. It's a very, very simple question. We have for five, six years been at the twelve million dollar mark at the ending fund balance. But we are right now requested, it's at twenty-four million, which is almost double. I'm just asking why such a huge jump and do we really need that much left over in the ending fund balance? That's, that's my only question. And this is on the last, last page, page fifty.
Now, who can answer that?
How big are you looking at?
Fifty, five zero.
Hi. So, so Madam Chair, just a quick question. What you trying to find out, uh, Councilman Abdullah? So I can answer you in one word.
I do have Treasurer Hicks Clayton. She may have the correct answer for him. Um, can we ask her to try and if she doesn't answer, I'll allow you to go ahead too.
No problem. Yeah, as, as you wish, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I may have partial answer because of looking at the cash flow that I keep. It's a tool that I manage here as treasurer. But looking at our cash flow, we do have, I mean, you have to take into consideration several additional, um, estimated expenditures. That we're going to be, are going to be hitting us going into the month of June. And let me find it here. For example, we've got, um, close to seven million dollars, six point five. That's just the pension contribution portion, for example. Um, if you're talking about operating costs for the month of June, you know, you've got payroll, two payrolls, things like that. And other operating expenditures, that's another anywhere from three. Let me take a look, uh, exactly give you estimated two point one five zero million. So again, you add that up. I mean, that could be part of it. Again, that's part of it. That's just the cash flow perspective. So I just wanted to share.
But that's been around every year, Madam Treasurer. It's not like a new thing. It's been around every single year. And then now suddenly we have a huge jump. That's, that's all I'm asking. It, it, the expenses for a city should not drastically change. We're talking about almost double.
I'm sorry. My apologies. Um, that's not necessarily true because the pension contributions are relatively, um, new. And they've increased considerably from previous year. I mean, just, I don't want to belabor that point, but I'm just telling you from the cash flow perspective. Um, and going into June, what outlay we can expect for expenditures. So that's the part that I can contribute to you. And that may just be a piece of this to your answer, but I just wanted to share it. Okay? Thank you.
Director Jamal, you have an answer?
Yes, uh, the answer is, is very simple. What you are looking at, uh, the column, uh, as of June, uh, thirty, uh, June thirty. Uh, which is in your column is the sixth theory of the file. It's not inaccurate. It's a reported as posted. It's not reported as calculated for fund balance or cash flow. You are asking, you are mixing the cash flow and the status of the fund of the city with the budgetary and the GL posting. What you see over there is a GL posting. That's what we posted as of May. Actually, when the report was sent to the chair. So, you know, it is, it is, as I said, the budget is a different. Uh, it's a different, you know, guria than the cash flow in the fund balances. The reconciliation of all this will give you an idea where this, where the city is financially. Right now, the budget is, we are presenting you a budget for next year. We are not discussing the budget of this year. We are, we are telling you. As two thousand twenty, we had five million fifty thousand dollars in our general fund. When we calculated and I calculated with the treasurer, based on, you know, her cash flow. We cannot be unpositive by one point six million dollars at the end. Remember that, that given, we are not received yet all the revenue we're supposed to receive. So we are short on the core. We are short, you know, on what we paid for. The, uh, the fire department and the police department, you know, for the COVID. We also, we paying extra because we had some deferred. Uh, expenditures for hospitalization, for financial benefits from last year. If you add all this up, it's about five million dollars. We need to recognize that when we, when we do the reconciliation of our fund balance of the city. So to, to, to tell you why, why it's like that, because this is the way our budget works. We didn't collect enough money. We spent more money during the year. I did my review, me and the budget team and the treasury. And we finding, uh, uh, ourselves, uh, you know, we are a little bit stressed. But again, this is usually, it's, it's the same every year. By June thirty, you are exhausted, you know, cash wise. Because you're paying everything and you're waiting for the tax, which is going to come in August or September. So this is the way the budget works. It, it's very difficult, you know, it, it's very difficult. Unless we, unless you want me to provide you with a trial balance later on, no big deal. I will, you know, with the budget team provide you with, you know, a trial balance as best as we can and where we are financially. But right now, we are focusing, uh, uh, councilman and the chair knows we focusing on next year. What, how we are going to deal with next year. Even if this year, it can be done, if you like to have a study session, we'll have a study session. And we discussed our position, you know, for this year later on. Now, are we going to use the three point seven million, uh, the two point seven million dollars from the last year fund balance to cover the year? I assure you, probably most likely not. Scientifically, using the statistical method, we are not. We already know we are receiving money. So, uh, you know, if. Go ahead and pin down at this moment when we. go ahead and pin down at this moment when we are at the last minute to approve the budget, something like that. You know, I wish that you called me like other councilmen called me and say, uh, you, the compliance, where we are, where we are with the trial balance, where we are with the cash flow, where we are with the, with the fund balance, how we look like, how the city look. I will call, I will call, you know, our auditors and would seek some consultation and we provide you with all the information. But, but at this, you know, twenty-four hours that we are discussing, you know, what we are gonna approve for next year.
But we're in the same exact spot, we're same exact spot last year. Here it is. This is the one from last year. This is last year's budget. It had the amount, here it is nine million something, nine million one point two.
I, I know. I wish, I wish I can explain accounting wise more than what I do, but I will refer and defer, uh, more professionally to our professionals. Martin, please go ahead. Please, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Martin.
I, I think I have a pretty simple answer, I think. So that's part of the budget. So I, I do wanna qualify that. However, I'm looking at the Excel file. The two thousand twenty-one column is not the actual fund balance. So that carries over to the beginning fund balance for the budget year that you're enacting. And right now, the activity for the twenty-one column is not the full year's activity. So the trial balance isn't fully updated for the full twelve months. The twenty million dollars is on the high side. If you look at the twenty-two, uh, twenty-two, uh, budget, the budget shows the net revenues versus, you know, expenditures, appropriations, all that. It's essentially a balanced budget. It's about forty-six thousand to the positive. It, it's not, so the twenty million fund balance that carries over from six thirty twenty-one, it's not an actual number. That's not how much you're actually gonna have at the end of the year. The focus, I believe, should be on the twenty-two column, which just shows the overall revenues and expenditures and what the balance is, you know, if you're adding to the fund balance or if you're subtracting from the fund balance. And based on the Excel file that I'm looking at, it looks like you're barely adding on. So, uh, you have a little bit more revenue than expenditures. But the balance, the fund balance of the twenty million that you're looking at at the end of June thirty twenty-one, I believe the trial balance, the, um, books are not updated through that time period. Clearly, we're not at June thirtieth yet, but I believe you're a couple of months out. So there's gonna be a lot of expenditures still incurred, which doesn't show up in the twenty-one column because you're not collecting property taxes or anything like that until after the fiscal year starts, the new fiscal year. So I don't know if that helps, but the twenty million dollar number is not an actual number to be looking at for the fund balance.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have, does that answer your question, Councilman Abdullah?
Not the perfect comfort level, but at least enough. I'm, I'm comfortable that from Plant Moran with all due respect, uh, because I know it's a, a, objective, um, third party.
Okay. Next, I have Councilman Wensel.
Yeah, thank you, Council Chair. Um, two quick things. I think we should stick with the one percent. It's, it'd be better to, to tell the residents, we made a mistake and we're gonna reduce the one percent lower than to say, hey, we made a mistake. We gotta charge you more. So I think we should stick with the one percent. Um, a second point is, for years, I've been pushing for a grant writer position in Dearborn Heights. And, uh, just by our, our conversations in the last couple of months, we realized that our current grant writer in this position of grant writer, or director of grants, I mean, I'm sorry, director of grants, uh, takes a, a vast knowledge in so many areas. And, uh, I mean, uh, every area, obviously, you know, the, uh, the current, uh, director of grants is, is knowledgeable in just about every area we've talked about in, in all of our meetings. So I'm gonna propose an amendment to the, uh, the budget to raise the, the director of grants fee from seventy-six thousand to eighty thousand. Okay, that's, that's my amendment. I, I don't know how we amend it or if we vote on it or what we do about that.
Need to make a motion in the general, I mean.
Not here, too late.
I think we, well, let's have our clerk, who's our parliamentarian.
I'm sorry, Council Chair. I mean, that's what was presented to you. So if you wanna change it, I, I imagine you'd have to do it as part of the motion when you adopt the budget. But that would throw off all the numbers, but I'm not the controller.
Council Chair?
Muscat?
You know, we, we just went through about six and a half hours meeting, discussion on this a couple of Fridays ago. And, uh, i- in my opinion, uh, it, it's, it's ridiculous to change anything that we have now. Um, I would think that the, uh, and I'm hoping that, uh, Director Jamal is comfortable with what he has and, and believe me, I, I'm a big fan of his, but, uh, uh, this is what we settled in at the beginning. And I think we should just stick with what we have right now. We, we went through, uh, many, many, many hours going through this stuff and, and, uh, with all due respect, uh, to everybody, it's, uh, to change it now is we're gonna start all over again. And, and this is kinda what I, why I posed this meeting for, because I don't want things to change. I, i- i- it, you know, my two questions at the beginning of the session was to ask if the budget was good. We asked the two people that know it better than anyone. And they're both saying that it's a good budget. So that to me should carry a long way into just approving a budget. I gotta, I have another question, but I'm going to call the question in to the proper people instead of wasting our time here. So if we go to vote yes or no on the budget on Tuesday, I'll have that answer. But to, to start changing things now.
Yeah, well, the, the budget is a fluid, uh,
Yes, you're correct.
And, uh, so I'll, I will pursue that in the future. And a one, a one percent administration fee is, is a heck of a lot more than four thousand dollars that I'm talking about. But I'll, 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 I'll bring this up later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Council, did you wanna respond at all?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to point out, I obviously am fond of, um, Mr. Jamal and, uh,
In here.
We, we can't hear you, sir.
Oh, oh, yeah. Really, I'm sorry. My thing is, it's, um, it's, it should be on.
That's good.
Okay, it's getting louder.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so I was saying, I'm obviously fond of Mr. Jamal. We work together a lot. Uh, but I mean, this is something we can actually do next council meeting. You can decide to amend the budget. So it's nothing that you really have to do today. I'm looking at the current budget and that any kind of an amendment that you have to do, we can do. And then our next meeting or meeting after that, whatever you want.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you for ammude me. I thanks the, uh, Honorable, the Council Tom Wensel. Uh, we both know each other personally and, and professionally. And I thank him and I thank all of you for your concern. Uh, this is not aimed at Hassan Jamal. I be today here, tomorrow I won't be here. And you already know, uh, the people move around for whatever reason it's. What, uh, the councilman suggesting is to value, value the position for that much. Uh, but that can be done later. Uh, anybody can bring a motion, uh, at any time, uh, next time and, and actually give the value for that particular position. I suggest the value is probably hundred twenty thousand. Uh, so, uh, I'm just, I'm, you know, so whatever you think, whatever you think the value is, you know, that's what you, that's what you give to the position, not to the person, not to the person. You may like me now, the new council may not like. Who knows? Uh, it, so the position, is the position deserve that much or not deserve that?
I think it does.
Uh, well, that's.
I think we should move on.
Okay, move on. I, I really thank you all of you. It's time to move on. Please vote on the budget if you have no more, you know, specific questions.
Dr. I have a whole list of people waiting to speak.
All right.
Yay, next we have Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I just vote, thank you.
Okay, I, next I have Councilman Baydun.
Madam Chair, thank you so much. Uh, I can't even tell you what my question is anymore. I think I've got it so either answered or so lost in there. So I'm gonna go ahead and yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, Councilman Conston?
Very briefly, Madam Chair. Number one, the, the, the one percent administrative fee, which can only be assessed by council, and once we assess it, it can't be in retrospect reduced. That's, it's a fiction. It's a way around the Headley Amendment when, back when inflation was higher and uh, property values were rising very quickly. But, I mean, the cost of a person in the treasurer's office to allocate the funds and send some of it to the state of Michigan for school taxes, that's, it doesn't cost one percent of everybody's tax bill. I, I will guarantee it. It's, it's just a fiction. And, and in the last six, seven years, we've never assessed, uh, the full one percent. But my question is the same as Councilman Abdullah's. If we're using a percentage of fund balance and, and I'd ask the controller or Martin from Plant Moran if that uh, sixteen percent number in the letter from the state treasurer's office is wrong, then, then why are we, we have, you know, uh, new positions created, why are we, why don't we, uh, uh, you know, reduce the budget? The money being taken out of fund balance and so forth, because these times are good. Property values are up and we're gonna be getting some, some, uh, new money. It's, it's too late really to, to, I guess, make any changes. But, uh, Martin or and or Controller Badri, is that sixteen percent from fund balance? Is that correct or not correct?
The letter that states the sixteen percent that you should have more, I believe, it says. There's no set percentage that you need to have. There's recommended percentages. And to be honest, given your fiscal year end and when you collect your, uh, revenues, um, you should probably have around that percentage, maybe a little bit higher for a cushion. But honestly, anywhere between like ten and twenty percent is reasonable. Uh, so the sixty percent falls right in the midst of it.
The, the sixteen percent, the, the letter says, look, this budget takes sixteen percent out of fund balance. If you have, what is your deficit reduction program or words like that? If you have, if we have five more budgets taking out sixteen percent of fund balance, we'll have no fund balance. It's, it says we're taking sixteen percent out of fund balance. Is that number correct? I see the controller raising his hand. Go ahead.
Controller.
Yeah, it doesn't exactly say that. It says on average, what, uh, what municipalities should, according to their recommendation, have is between, it's between sixteen and seventeen percent, like a rainy day fund or something. Uh, bigger municipalities might cut that down a little bit. Smaller ones might have a little bit more. Uh, and they were, they, it was a little, the, the way it was worded was a little confused. We actually called them and talked to them. And they said they just wanna know that, uh, what our target is. Uh, it, it wasn't necessarily a, um, a negative, or I think it was a suggestion and they wanted to see what our plans were. Are we looking to have like a higher number so that if, if because of what we're going through this year and all that in, in the future expenses, are we gonna have a bigger rainy day fund or a smaller rainy day fund? And that's what I understood. And, and Martin, we talked about it with Plant Moran. Uh, so I mean, Martin might be able to comment a little more with his expertise, because they deal with a lot of municipalities as well. Um, but that's, that was my understanding of that letter. It wasn't necessarily a, hey, this is, uh, this is a horrible thing. You guys should have like two percent or twenty-five percent. That's, that's not what the intention, intention was from my understanding.
Yeah, sixteen point, so the sixteen percent, actually, it's a relatively easy mess. So the way the state calculates it is there, given your June thirty year end and the fact that you're gonna be collecting property taxes right after year end, their recommendation would be that you should have about two months worth of expenditures in your fund balance. So that way you can keep going with your operations before the property taxes come into the city. And then two months out of twelve months, it actually comes up to sixteen point seven percent. So that's kinda the recommendation.
Yeah. The, the way I read it was that this budget is using sixteen percent from the city's reserves from the rainy day fund from, you know, the fund balance. Not, and that going forward, if that's using too much, because, you know, in the future, if we keep doing that, we'll eat up all our fund balance. So that's not what that letter said?
No, I, I, when I first saw it, I also said the wording here is a little tricky. I mean, I wonder if it meant that, but we, we basically discussed it with Plant Moran. We looked it over and, and then we actually read some of the state's recommendations and the different third-party recommendations. And that's basically what, what was said that we should have between sixteen and seventeen percent. And even that doesn't necessarily apply to us. We're, uh, bigger municipalities have a little bit less. Smaller municipalities have a little bit more, you know, so.
And then the, the discussion of the, or the point about the bank reconciliations, what was that? Uh, what fiscal year were they talking about in that same letter?
This is based on the audit for last year. And so they're talking about last year's, uh, they, they were commenting on, on the audit for last year's budget, basically, last year's, uh, fiscal year.
Or thank you.
Hey, Councilman Baydun, did you remember your question? You muted yourself again.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I was not raising my hand. I was actually congratulating what the controller was saying.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, at this time, I have Marianna Hernandez. Where is she?
I believe she's saying she's not.
Okay, 'cause I wrote you on the list when you raised your hand. Okay, and then I have Councilman Abdul Haq again.
Is it my turn or Marianna?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I have just a couple of questions, uh, to satisfy, uh, Councilman Abdullah. Uh, to Martin, if he would follow with me, I'm going to read from the budget, page fifty. Line on the ba- very bottom, net of revenues slash appropriation dash all funds. It is close to ten million dollars more than the previous year. Can you explain, Martin, what's this for? Is this revenue or those are obligations we need to take into account?
No, I believe this is, uh, going back to, uh, what we, what I was describing Burt before, because it's in the six thirty two thousand one column. The six thirty, the, the June thirty twenty-one fiscal year has not been updated. So the number of the ten million dollars is not actual.
All right.
Uh, and the controller can correct me if I was, I'm wrong, but I believe that twenty-one, the ten million dollars being added is not accurate because not all your expenditures are reflected in there for the last couple of months of the year.
That's correct, because I see the sum of twenty-three millions on the bottom, nine oh six zero zero nine.
Yes.
Is the, is the sum of the two numbers.
So the, the problem is that the net of revenue appropriations, all funds of the ten million dollars is overstated.
Okay.
As a result, the ending fund balance of all funds is overstated as well by about the ten million dollars.
Thank you.
I don't know what the actual number is, uh, but I know that the controller hasn't posted all the entries yet and, you know, the rest of the year hasn't.
I'm just going to ask, uh, either the chairman of the city council or the mayor, please to contact the Raymond, uh, you know, the, the, the auditors to look into the draft program if we are in compliance with the contract. Thank you.
Dr. Jamal?
I hope we answered all your questions. I didn't hear any questions from you. I hope I satisfied your questions when you asked me today afternoon. But to, to make sure, you know, council, uh, Honorable Councilman, uh, Conston, uh, gets it's five. The councilman, please, the one percent being done for years. We need it, especially this year, especially this year. We asked this out budgetary wise because we received this revenue and we incurred more expenditures from previous years. Number two, the trial balance is done at the end of the year or at the end of every month. We are not doing it at the end of the month as supposed to. We will. You will find it later on in your box or by email. You will find it later on in your box or by email. The third, uh, question you raised. About the whether we are in compliance with the GASP recommendation. GASP is the General Board, uh, Accounting Standard. So the state of Michigan Treasury Department recommends that. On the average, sixteen to seventeen percent from your unassigned fund. Be at that level. Our budget, as we presented, and as posted right now, and as you have it in front of you, is a combination, combination. Of restricted, assigned, unassigned. Fund, it's a corporate fund. Now, if you segregate them and you calculate only the unassigned, unassigned revenue. With or versus the balance, we are way above the sixteen or seventeen percent. So the, putting the budget together, it is, the recommendation by the state treasury. It's not like, here you are, here what it is, go ahead and do it this way. It is, it is a matter of art. The budget is an art. You put it anywhere you like, anywhere you wanna present it. It can presented, okay, the only thing I looked for, it's not the cosmetic of this budget. I look at the real numbers, truth of the budget, whether the numbers are kosher or not. Cosmetically, I really didn't care a lot about how the budget is being presented. The mayor wanna be very conservative, I agree with him. The treasurer, you know, wanted to, to use the cash flow, I agree. I looked at the real number, the real number add up. Okay, Councilman, the, the real number add up. We are in compliance with GASP. You know, and later on, I will, if we, if we, if you like, we can, we can do a study session later on. And bring in the trial balance, we bring Plant Moran to explain, they are gonna be involved with our prep. For the, for the auditing, so I assure you, the, the, the budget is very real number. I wish the mayor allowed me to put, you know, based on the expectation. Uh, based on the moving average, based on statistical methodology that we use, the mayor wanted to be very strict, very strict. We don't have it, Hassan, we're not gonna count it. Let's tell the council the truth of the matter. I agree with him. I mean, please, you understand, this mayor dictate our budget team. And we do what he telling us at the chair of the budget. He actually directed us, count the beans, if you don't count them, don't, don't post them. Don't present it, and I thank him for that. Uh, so the budget, you know, is true budget, it's real budget, please go ahead and prove it, let's us move on. And anything you need, next week, tomorrow, if you need to do an amendment, we are ready, we will help you, we will sit down with you as a budget team. And we are open, transparent. And we follow, you know, as much as possible. During this year, we are in coordination with Plant Moran. Martin will tell you, he prepared three different proposals for us. That's correct, Martin? Right?
He's muted.
Uh, so, so you can see proposal, yeah, correct, right? And you can see it. So we are, we are working, we are working on behalf of the city. We are not working on behalf of the politicians, we are working on behalf of the residents. We are operators, we have obligation by law, by the state law, not to follow directions, okay? From anybody unless it's under the law, unless we are knowing that we are following the correct things. Everything I recommended, I called, I, I consulted with Plant Moran. Great team, very, very much open heart and available to us with no charges.
Thank you, Hassan Jamal.
Have a great day, thank you, thank you all of you for the good questions. Discussion is good, open to the public. Be free, discuss it, don't be fearing anything, we are in the United States of America.
Okay, anyone else have any further questions before we move on to public comment? Okay, at this time, we have public comment, you need to state your name or where you live, and you have two minutes. I have Finn Strapowski, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council. Um, my question that Ray Muscat, or Mr. Muscat brought up, uh, had a little concern. Um, you stated, is there anything wrong with the budget? I'd like to know if your questions have been answered, and is there something in particular that you were looking for? Um, that is, so, my other question is, um. Let's not fix what isn't broke, keep the one percent in there, big deal.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Okay, and, uh, I like the fact that we're taking the advice of, um, Plant Moran. And going forward with it, instead of saying, well, let's just wait and we'll fix it later, like the previous administration. Let's move on with the program that's actually gonna work. Instead of, uh, searching for numbers that was never shown, you're getting your answers. Uh, but Mr. Muscat, if you, uh, are you satisfied with? The answers that you received?
Council Chair, may I respond? Uh, he, the reason why I ask those questions, because I, I've contacted both of them, and, and I've worked with, uh, Director, uh, Jamal. On many things throughout the years and, uh. Uh, and I asked him that question so he could, it could be transparent to the public. That I feel there's nothing wrong with the budget, and, and, uh, so let him speak, I wanted the comptroller to speak and be transparent. And, uh, we've spent many, 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 many hours on this. So just for them to, to be able to speak that, my questions were, were answered, and they were also answered through via telephone calls also.
Okay, so you're, you're satisfied with what's out there? And, because I thought that you were concerned, uh, there was something that wasn't being shown. But if you're, if you're satisfied with what's going on here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't need to hear from Mr. Jamal, um, I, I do think he.
And one percent, uh, and, and with all due respect to Councilman Constan, the, the six years that I've been on, uh, city council, it's always been one percent. Okay, it's always been one percent, and, and, at the first, I was really upset about it. And then I went along with it, uh, then I found out that it's truly needed, so that's why I've been going along with it. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, any other public comment before we end this closed study session, I, before we end this study session and go to a regular meeting? Okay, at this time, I'm going to end the study session.